All right, getting me everyone. I believe everyone's on the call and we're going to call this meeting to order. And so this is our, an emergency meeting of the Board of Education. And I'm going to ask Mr. Gallo if he would lead us in the pledge.
Sure, if you would, please stand and place your over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, I want to ask, do we have a quorum? I believe all that are checked in, it looks like we do have a quorum, correct? Karen, you're recording that, we do have a quorum? All right, we will move to item two point.
Gwen, excuse me, Gwen, is there anybody more seen, I don't have the list.
Yes, Mr. Tillman, and do you need them to voice record that they are here?
I know, as long as you tell me who's not.
Okay, Mr. Tillman is the, is not here, he's not present.
Okay, all also present, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have established a quorum, so we are now at item 2.1. I believe there is public comment. This is, the public can address the board on any item that will be approved by the board at the conclusion of the closed session portion of the meeting announcements regarding action taken by the board in closed session will be made in open session, and this will be an open session meeting.
Gwen, currently I do not have one, just please stand by, okay?
Okay, well, we want to hear from the public, so if there will be a public comment, just let me know when. All right, I'm sorry, was there?
Yeah, it's Harold, sorry to interrupt, I just, I just got a text from Ashley Betasalcala, our SBTA president, that said, I just submitted comments online through the Google form, so it is on its way somewhere.
Okay.
I'll look for it, I did check, I didn't see it yet, but I'll keep an eye out for it.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 3.1, which is the action regarding the district's response to coronavirus. I have asked that, we have an emergency board meeting, because as we know, in the midst of our board meeting on yesterday, there were some changes that came up, some directives from our state superintendent, as well as from our governor. And in an effort to make sure that we're in compliance and we are preparing ourselves to move forward with accurate information, I wanted the board to come together to discuss the, the possibility of us looking at moving beyond our original dates that we had set in place to return to school, but we know that there have been some, some new information is showing that this coronavirus is really something that we have to try to get in front of for the health and welfare of all of our students in our community. And so we will have a discussion tonight in reference to whether we will extend or how we will go about extending, and then we will need to set those timelines. So I am going to, I believe Ms. Rosales Medina is up, and then Dr. Barbara Flores.
Yes, my, first of all, my, my question was initially regarding public comments, because I had someone call me at the, before the last meeting, when the last meeting ended, that they didn't know where to submit their public comments, so is there a link, how do, I want to make sure that the public are able to know how they can submit a public comment.
Okay. Would Dr. Volkmer or Karen like to review that?
Is that a link that can be shared, is that, because if it's through Google Talks, who has, I mean, how?
If I may answer, it's on our homepage, if they scroll down to the calendar, it's towards the bottom, you click on the, the, the board meeting, like you would click on when it says April 1st, and it takes you to that.
Okay. And that was my question for right now, and I'll go ahead and ask another question.
It's also on the agendas too, like if you look at the top of the agenda, it gives you the link to it, yes, they have to type that in though.
They have to, but it's not a place where they can submit through the YouTube or comments through the YouTube, nothing like that, right?
No, not through YouTube, no.
Okay, just making sure.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Flores?
I'm on our, Karen, I'm on our agenda on our website. Where is that link that Ms. Medina is asking about?
Okay, let me get to the website.
It says, Meetings Agenda Policies Library.
No, you won't, you're not on the board docs, you're just on the website, and you scroll all the way down, and it says Calendar Events. If you keep scrolling down, you'll see where it says Calendar Event. And if you see that, it says April 1, Special Board, Special Board of Education Meeting, they would click on that, and it brings it up. It was supposed to, there it is.
Okay, I don't see it, but I'm on our website. Well, I don't see it, Karen, I don't know where you're at on the website, so.
So we do want to, again, say to our public, if they're having problems navigating, we will, we will take questions if they come in, even though we're moving forward on that section.
So I wanted to ask, Karen, has Ashley Alcala, Alcala's public comment come in yet?
I'm trying to get it right now, just give me a couple minutes and I'll get it, okay? Hold on.
Okay, was that your question, Dr. Flores?
No, no, I didn't have a question, I had a comment. I've been, you know, listening and also reading a lot of reports, listening to a lot of the experts regarding the coronavirus, and what their recommendations are, especially our health, public health officials, through, not just in the state of California, but also throughout the nation. And they, given what they've been saying is that we're very prone to recurrent, recurrent apics, apexes, and that, you know, we're not supposed to physically be in contact with each other. What is really scary is that there can be people that are carriers, and we don't know who they are, because we don't have the, enough tests to test everybody, so that we can keep quarantined, given the fact that there aren't enough masks, there aren't enough gloves, even for our health officials. We have colleagues or friends of the family who are physicians. One of our godsons is at UCLA, and they don't have enough masks, they don't have enough equipment. He says, just stay inside, I'm calling to tell you, do not have any physical contact if you don't need to. It's imperative that we listen to what health officials are saying. And in that context, I'm thinking about our children, our teachers, our staff, and, you know, just being cautious about, for us to make decisions on the side of caution, so that, you know, we protect our, you know, 50,000 kids, our community families, our, you know, five or six thousand employees, et cetera. So I am in favor of, of closing our schools, as the governor recommended, and our state superintendent Thurman recommended, our county superintendent Ted Alejandra also recommended till the end of school, until, that's two months, that's two months, and then, you know, to see if what we can do after two months. And I've been getting calls, you know, from parents about their seniors and teachers as well, worried about it, and, you know, I keep saying, well, when we, you know, when we're clear of this, you know, we will celebrate and honor you and your graduations, and so forth, so those are my comments, I, that I am, I am in favor of us complying with the health, public health order that the government, governor issued.
Thank you, and I believe we have that public comment now available, and then I will get back to you, Ms. Medina.
Yes, thank you, yes. All right, this is from Ashley Betasakala, the SBTA president. Good evening, President Rogers, members of the board and cabinet. I am Ashley Betasakala, President of San Bernardino Teachers Association. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the 3,000 members of SBTA. Earlier today, San Bernardino County Superintendent Ted Alejandra, in response to Governor Gavin Newsom's earlier announcement, the schools should remain closed through the end of this school year, wrote a statement where he recommended that San Bernardino County School Districts extend school closures through the end of the 2019-20 school year. Several districts in the county have already made this tough decision, and in the interest of the health and safety of our employees and students in San Bernardino City, I urge you to take bold action tonight and extend our school closure through the end of the school year. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Medina, and then Dr. Hill?
Okay, no, I, I agree with Dr. Flores, our, the safety of our students, the safety of our staff is extremely important. We will still maneuver away like how we planned previously with, with school lunches and childcare and so forth, we will have those resources. But I think it's important that our educators start preparing as of now, knowing the fact, and, and of course, our students and our family, just knowing the fact that it's, it's going to go all the way through the end of the school year, and they can prepare accordingly. So I do support moving forward and having it until the end of the year. As it was mentioned earlier with Dr. Flores regarding the graduation, it is very hard right now. I know for our seniors to realize that they're not going to have a graduation maybe earlier, or the traditional time, but once things are settled, we will definitely have a great celebration, we will celebrate you, and we'll celebrate the fact that you made it through even with all these struggles, even with the challenges that they've been able to face, and they made it through. So we're going to make sure that you receive that wonderful moment of celebration for your graduation too as well.
Thank you, Ms. Medina, Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to share that I'm in support of the recommendation from the governor, state superintendent, as well as our county superintendent. And I, I do believe we are making a wonderful this decision. I can't think of anything greater than graduation and saving lives, so I, I certainly hope we are on the same accord with that, and just want you, I, I hope the board will be very supportive of giving Dr. Mitchell and his team whatever support we need to do, so that they can move on beyond the next couple of weeks in prayer, preparing our students for the rest of the school year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I apologize, Mr. Gallo, MG, it can also be Margaret, but I believe now that was Mike Gallo, and then after that, Dr. Wyatt. Mr. Gallo, are you on? I'm sorry.
President, I don't know how you get M D with M H, but whatever, it's okay. I would always defer to Margaret, period, so. I, I think I want to echo what everybody's kind of coming to the conclusion of, I mean, it would only be a month left, basically, from the one May timeline to where we're, we're talking about, you know, reconstituting and getting people together, you know, for a month, and I think just looking at the progression of the virus, it's probably not prudent to be assembling in any case, so I'm in complete support.
Thank you. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President, and hello to my fellow board members. I know it was pretty quiet last night, and some folks had reached out to me and asked me why, and it's because this is obviously a, a very emotional time for, for many of us, and, you know, for many of us, this is hitting us in our own personal lives. There's been a high level of anxiety with so many of our families and our students out there, so, you know, we want everybody out there just to understand that, you know, our emotions and our empathy and our anxiety is high with you as well, that this hits home for many of us, you know, my son's still in school, and wondering, you know, Dad, am I going back to school? But now we, we have that answer, and I think it's, it's nice that we do have an answer now that we're not coming back to school, and as some of you have said, we can definitely start planning on ramping up our distance learning, making sure our families and kids that need meals are getting those provided, ensuring that we do our very best to work with our students with disabilities, but all populations and all kids that we work with, and, and I just want to say, I, I am glad our board made that decision weeks ago, and that our board is going to make the decision tonight. One life would be too many, and, and I'd like to believe that we've saved many lives by, you know, making sure that our kids and our staff did not go back to school, because as many of you have said, I think Dr. Flores said earlier, that many folks are asymptomatic, they don't show the signs of this, and it's too late after that if we've made contact with them, and so I'm in complete support of this. I, I thank our state superintendent, our governor, and our, our county superintendent as well, for their courage and their decision, and I'm glad that we as the board are supporting and moving forward with this as well, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores? Are you there, Dr. Flores?
I had to unmute, sorry. I said, this is related to our decision to, you know, close our schools, and I had a, I have to confess, I had a very restless sleep last night, just thinking about all our kids and our families, in terms of our food distribution, and I'm still very anxious about, you know, some of our, our sites that are far away from our different communities that are very, very poor, like Rio Vista, and, you know, Salinas, Neil Roberts, Roosevelt, Gomez, Martin Luther King, you know, our San Bernardino High School, over in San Gieria, Emmerton, Fairview, you know, our, our continuation school, et cetera, Highland, I, I am still, I'm thinking, because, you know, after being on, you know, doing teacher supervision for 32 years, I know this community really, really well. I mean, I've been to just about every school, and I think I have been to every school, and so it's just concerning me, and I, I want us just to keep that in mind, Dr. Volkmer and cabinet, when we start thinking about centralizing, because a lot of people do not have cars, and it's not easy to access. So that's just my, and we're now going to be closed for two months, so that, I know it's going to put an extra burden also on our, our C S P A staff, our classified staff, so I, I hope that we reconsider and look at all the possibilities, that's all, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you for this comments, and I know we did discuss that, you know, raise that on last night, and I think it's important, and I'm pretty sure that the staff has taken really good notes on that, and to try to really look and engage in that communication with the geographics, and I know before, they kind of looked at where the majority of a lot of the individuals were coming in the most impacted schools, so, you know, that's something that I'm sure they'll look at to add, or to move, or to take away, because we're pretty spread out, but we do, you know, we want to make sure that we're trying to meet those needs in the best way we can, and be mindful of our staff, that, that is, that I can't say enough, that's supporting us, and being the manpower on those campuses wherever we choose. Dr. Volkmer, did you have something you were to chime in on?
Actually, Madam President, you already said it, we, we will continue to review the data as it comes in, our, our intention is to get every student that needs it a meal in the most efficient way possible, in terms of keeping staff away from everybody else, but that's the reason we actually made the, the changes we made from spring break to post-spring break, was because we noticed, we got feedback from pockets that were not having access to food. We'll continue to monitor that as we move forward, with the, with the intent of getting every student that needs a meal, a meal.
Okay, and board, just so you know, there are a few more comments that are coming in, so I want to make sure that we get those comments, as we continue to engage before we move forward with the vote. Karen, you can let me know if you are ready, and I will monitor that. In the meantime, Dr. Volkmer, was there anything else you wanted to add? I know that you were engaged in the conversation today, but again, we're taking a lot of this direction from what we have heard last night, with the state superintendent, as well as the governor's information that we engaged, and it's all about saving lives, and we definitely want to stay on that course.
Yeah, we're, we're totally on board with that, we, the only thing we would reinforce, and it's already been said, is that closing schools doesn't mean stopping instruction.
Absolutely.
Totally prepared to move forward with an instructional program that involves different types of activities for students, that, and you saw that outlined yesterday very well, and that we will, pending the board's, pending the board's approval and decision this evening, we have messaging actually that's ready to go out either way, so we're prepared to move forward as the board wishes.
And thank you for that comment, because that's, that's one of the challenges that we have to do in our messaging right now, you know, when we say schools are closed, we're not saying education is closed, we still have some time left in the school year, and I know there's been some confusion around that, and so we want to be very clear, you know, and detailed, and ensure that our parents and students are clear on the message. Let's see, I believe, okay, Ms. Medina?
Um, yeah, just want to make sure that we're not forgetting, I know Mr. Tillman mentioned the last time, students, students who are, are living in a reality that there is abuse at home, so we also have to be mindful of making sure we're letting them know that there are avenues of support, making sure that our students, our families are able to get access to our school police, and maybe there's a hotline, that way they can understand where to call if they need to. Food, I, I agree with Dr. Flores, we just have to make sure that we're mindful of those that can travel. And then going back to summer school, I mean, when the school is closed, typically what happens during summer school, there's programs that are, are providing enrichment programs, something, a safe place for students to go to, lunch, breakfast and lunch, so as we're thinking, as we're moving forward with this, I, we want to look at ways how we can continue this in case it goes past the June, and, and trying to look at still summer programs if that's the case, and to prepare just in case.
Thank you. And you're at, let's see. Okay, and Dr. Flores, I'm just waiting to hear from our public comments before I call for the vote. Thank you. And to your comments, Ms. Medina, yes, that was even a concern this morning in speaking with our, our police department, ensuring that those numbers from Public Health to Department of Behavioral Health is out there, you know, as a, as a hotline, so they can access that right away, because there is, you know, there's a lot of depression looming right now, and not, and uncertainties, but we definitely have to make sure that they have numbers that they can call. Karen, how are we looking with those?
President Rogers, I have the comments, I have several, so it might be slow for me to go through them, but I'm going to do my best, okay?
No worries.
Okay, um. Just got to make sure, because they come through, kind of strange, um. Okay, this one doesn't have a name, it just says A, says they're a parent. Number one, is there a way of extending the school year over the summer? Number two, when school is back in session, will the students read the school year? That was that one. Okay, I have another one from Jasmine Romero, a parent, and she is asking, what is the San Bernardino School District going to do to keep our kids educated and do not fall behind academically? Is there going to be a school portal online for kids to have classes at home? Okay, um, I have to see more, that's a double ticket. Okay, I have one from Danny Flores, she's, they're a district employee, and will classified staff be paid during the orders from the governor? My next one is from Monique, a parent, and she says, good afternoon, board members, thank you for everything you are doing, my question is, why are some schools mailing work packets and some doing grab and go? I think the grab and go model is unnecessary and just puts us at higher risk. My opinion, I'm of the opinion they should all be mailed, or even do the digital form. All right, another one from Denise, she says, oh, she's telling us where the link is, link for public comments is located in the app under calendar, click on the blue highlight title for today's board meeting, and that, that was that one. Got one from Juan Otero, a parent, and he says, what do we do if we were not able to order our books for this year? How do we order the books for our kids? Adriana Vasquez, and she's a community member. How do we provide childcare if the schools will remain closed, but we will still wa, but we will still watch children? Not quite sure on that. And. One from Deirdre, a parent. How come it is taking so long for S B C U S D to get learning materials and work for our kids, when all other districts had theirs up and running the next day the school shut down? Okay, and I have one from Summer Steele, she's the director of Gear Up at C S U S B. She says, Gear Up has been supporting the entire class of 2020 since 2014. Our team is fully committed to supporting all seniors through the end of the academic year and beyond. We are looking forward to celebrating their huge accomplishments as soon as we safely can. In the meantime, we remain steadfast in providing virtual advising, educational support, college and financial aid assistance, family engagement, and wraparound support. We are truly all in this together. And that is what I have right now, but I've been hearing it move, so let me do some more checking, and I'll get back to you.
Okay, and so we're going to begin to wrap up. Dr. Volkmer, I, I'm sure you're going to chime in, that some of those questions will be answered, I want to remind the public again, this is a special board meeting, and so we kind of have one agenda item, but we will have a regularly scheduled board meeting coming up next week, and so we'll be able to, I'm sure after our decision tonight, there is a documentation that's going to be going out to the public, and is going to be able to answer some of the questions, and then in time, we'll continue. Dr. Volkmer?
Yep, you said it very well, Madam President, we'll reach out to each of those people that had specific questions, I will have a member of staff reach out to them, and then I forgot a comment earlier, we will work to get a clearer link for the public to be able to make comments during our board, during our board meetings, thank you.
Okay, great, all right, I will go back, I see, I think, Dr. Flores, you, you made the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion. Before I do that, Dr. Volkmer, when is our official date of school academic year ending? Do you know?
I think it's June 4th, is my, is my best recollection, I can, I can walk over to my office and find out exactly for you, but I think it's.
I can say, but also for staff and for administrators, do we have to include them?
You give me one second, I'll be right back.
Fourth, I see here, looks like it was on that.
But I, when we say close of academic year, it just doesn't include the students, it includes our staff as well. It includes our staff as well, correct, or?
And I believe staff, remember we have staff that, um, our teachers, our classroom teachers, I believe is June 8th, but then we have program specialists and a number of other types of employees that work through the month of June, um, all the way till June 30. So I think if you say, uh, school year, I think we understand what that, what that.
Okay, for school year, okay. So June 8th, it looks like is the last day for the classroom teachers.
Well, I'll say school year like Dr. Volkermer said. So Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the physical closure of schools and continue, uh, education via distance learning, uh, for the, uh, in that academic year, uh, academic school year.
Okay, great.
I'll check him out.
And I see a second, there was a second up by, uh, Mr. Gallo and Dr. Wyatt, all right?
We'll have a, a point of discussion as well.
Okay, so it's been moved and properly second. Is there a discussion?
Um, yeah, I've got, I've got just a couple of questions, uh, when we say we're closing, uh, school sites, do we have, um, a staff member, i.e. like custodial staff or others that are still, uh, going into the schools to, you know, maintain cleaning, uh, doing things like that? And it kind of hinges on my question of, um, uh, contractors, um, uh, say, working in construction projects, um, for our entry control, safety for entry control. I mentioned our greenhouse project and things like this. Are there other, are, are we locking down campuses and keeping all personnel offsite? Or are we, uh, is there still some staff? I know there's been principals going in. I see fair number of cars in front of some of our schools. So I know we haven't, we haven't quote locked them down, say, um, but, um, how, how is that working?
So, uh, Mr. Gallo, we're, as you, um, heard last night, one of our values is to minimize exposure as much as we can. So we are continually working to have as few people on campus as possible, only those that are providing essential service. There is some, uh, guidance in relation to construction projects and I'd like specifically, and I'd like Janie to, um, mention that, uh, if she would.
So Tom Pace and his team, we've worked with legal. He has put together a recommendation on projects that are currently in process. Um, there are some additional requirements that we want to ensure there's physical distance and that, and they have their own insurance coverage and all that. That's going through the incident command so that we're very consistent around what we're doing. Um, he's, he finalized the recommendation, it's going through the process tomorrow. As far as our own employees that are onsite, you know, we have custodians cleaning up after the food service distributions and, and, and stuff like that. But as much as possible, keeping, uh, our employees away from the school sites. We're also working on a plan to do some, at least some mowing and that sort of thing, but also ensuring that those employees are, um, are safe and only one person in a truck, et cetera.
Can, can someone mute, please? Thank you.
Um, do we know when that guidance is going to come out just for, just so we could know?
Well, we should have something for you, Nick. Mike, we should have something next week.
Okay, great, thanks, Janie.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other, all right? So it's been moved and seconded with our discussion. Now we will go ahead and take the vote. It's going to be a voice, voice, voice vote, obviously. So, um, Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Medina?
I.
Who am I missing? Myself? Sorry, did I get everyone? And for me, an I as well.
Uh, Mike Gallo.
Oh, Mike Gallo, MG?
MG, yeah, right.
Did you say, did you vote?
Uh, I.
I, okay. All right, I believe I's have it and our motion care is carrying forward. Thank you all so much. Um, you know, this is tough and again, I know the public and many are watching us right now. Our regularly scheduled board meeting will be next week. But again, we thought it was just important for us to come and move forward and ease, you know, any concerns that anyone could have pertaining with our best interest or your best interest to ensure that we want to err on the side of what is right and ensure to you that we know that this is tough, this is different. And as many of us have said, this is uncharted waters, but we're going to work through it together because we know that education still has to exist for our students and we also want our graduates to know. I think as Dr. Hill said earlier, we understand it is a challenge, but we are working with you. We, we can't wait to celebrate you, but we will get through this. So if there are no other comments or any other statements, I'm going to move to adjourn, all right? We're moving to adjourn, is there a second? Dr. Flores has moved to adjourn, second, Margaret Hill. All right, it's been moved and properly second. All in favor? I, 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 I moved it in written form, guys. She did, she did, stayed unwritten. All right, so meeting is adjourned, we will see everyone on Tuesday, again, same time, same video.